Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
I would like to open the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, August 21st, 2023, and it is exactly 6:30. I would ask that you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I would ask that you please silence your cellphones and notify the Chair if you are making a video or audio recording of this open session meeting. The placement and operation of the recording equipment should not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Okay, we have a proclamation. Would you like to read that, Ms. Scott Price?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Whereas with September being recognized as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, the Cape and Islands Suicide Prevention Coalition invites our communities, mental health advocates, prevention organizations, survivors, and allies to join us in helping to de-stigmatize mental health and take proactive action towards suicide prevention. We seek to raise awareness and visibility of mental health and suicide prevention resources in our community and help connect individuals with the appropriate services. And whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, AFSP, suicide is the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34, with more than 48,000 people dying by suicide annually in the United States. And whereas with an average of 132 suicide deaths daily, and each one directly impacting 100 additional people, including friends, service members, family, social media connections, and neighbors, we know a significant number of individuals have been impacted by suicide. Whereas Barnstable County's suicide rate is 1.5 times higher, standing at 14.2 per 100,000 versus the Commonwealth of Massachusetts' suicide rate of 9.5 per 100,000, we recognize the need to create hope through action locally. Whereas, our local Cape and Islands Suicide Prevention Coalition works hard to spread the word about prevention, awareness, education, and action. Whereas Falmouth, Massachusetts publicly places its full support behind those who work in the field of mental health, education, and law enforcement. And whereas, we encourage all residents to take time to understand mental health through education and recognize that we need to take care of our mental health while we take care of each other. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Nancy Robbins-Taylor, Edwin Scott P. Zalinski II, Douglas C. Brown, Angelay Scott Price, and Robert P. Mascali do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention and Action Month in the Town of Falmouth. And witness thereof, we have here and to sit our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this 21st day of August 2023.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the only thing I would add is that there is, on September 14th, a suicide prevention ribbon ceremony at 1:00 PM at Cape Cod Community College Tilden Library steps where the proclamation will be read publicly by the Cape Cod Community College's president. So if anybody would like to attend that, it's out there. Thank you. And we will mail that out. Okay, any recognitions from the board? Mr. Mascali.
So I attended the public meeting of the Davisville Project, and I just wanted to recognize the professionalism that was exhibited by our town planner Jed Kornok and our housing coordinator, Kim Fish. They did a very good presentation, and I just think they should be recognized for the good work they did.
Great. Thank you for that. Mr. Brown?
I would just comment, I saw a note from Mr. Renshaw that said that Ms. Fish had been subject to some unpleasant trees, and I'm disappointed to hear that. She's a hardworking person, and she's just doing the job that we asked her to do. And it's very unfortunate that people seem to take it personally, as if she's the reason for the root of their anger, when it's really the direction from this board. So if they want to have complaints, they should be bringing them to us.
I think your point is well taken. It's the part of our strategic plan which is given to the town manager, who gives it to his staff to make sure that the goals and objectives of that plan are met. And I think it's very unfortunate, and I'm hoping that Mr. Renshaw will speak to it again in his update at the very end of the meeting.
Thank you.
So thank you. Any other recognitions? How about announcements? I have one, and that is, it kind of dovetails with your recognition. We have received many emails regarding the Reposea property, and people get an automatic response. I just want to make sure that people know that we get them, we will keep them in a folder, and we will look at them again if and when this project moves forward. Is anyone here for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will go right into business. Business one, Mr. Renshaw.
Thank you, and good evening, Chair, Madam Chair. The purpose of our first agenda item, and our interim water superintendent, Mike Rigado, is going to talk a little bit more about this. But basically, we're going to be requesting the Select Board consider accepting on behalf of the Town a water main easement. Important to know, and Mike is going to share this as well, and there was a team that put this together, Brian Tobin, Associate Town Council as well. This is not a new process, we're just going to ensure enhanced consistency with how this is handled going forward. So Mike, please.
Good evening, Mike Rigado, interim water superintendent. This project, 213 North Falmouth Highway, it's a new condominium affordable housing development, which they installed a new water main in. And this easement's something that's been in our approval letters for a long time, and it's kind of a formality to have the Select Board sign off on it. A couple of the changes we made, they're not really changes. We encourage applicants now to secure the easement language on the front end of the project, because easement language can hold up projects before they're finalized to get the water onto the property. Another thing is the water doesn't get turned on until this is finalized. So we've had issues in the past of people stealing water, people illegally hooking up, you know, no backflow protection, which is a big public health problem. So ironing these out, you know, more towards the front end will definitely help projects move more smoothly.
Certainly makes sense to front-load it. Board have questions? Mr. Brown?
I just wanted to clarify, I first thought I was misreading it. We're accepting the easement because it gives us the right to go onto their property rather than the other way around, which is what we usually do. Correct?
Yeah, there's some, the easement basically accepts the right, I mean, I'll let Brian speak about the legalities, but basically, we're not assuming ownership of this main. This is basically about our rights to go on the property.
Doug, I'll be pretty quick, but yes, I mean, that's the ultimate purpose of the easement, because for this type of property...
Could you just introduce yourself for people at home? I'm sorry. I want people to know who you are.
No, of course. Thank you, Nancy. Associate Town Council, Brian Tobin.
Thank you.
So, like, for example, this particular property is a condominium association, so it'll have a common driveway, so that will remain a private way. And so the easement in this case makes it very clear the town's right to enter upon that property and conduct any repairs to the water main when necessary. And it gets into the details of what those rights and responsibilities look like.
Thank you.
Mr. Mascali?
Just one comment, Brian. The letter from Mr. Terry, I understand it's his opinion as to all the documents. I would say that he, the very last paragraph, "Further, the LLC represents and warrants", and goes on to say that it'll be included in the documents and so forth. I think the letter would be better if it was countersigned or indicated that the LLC actually signed that letter as well, or consented to what was in the letter. Just a suggestion. Do you want me to take a look at it?
Sure, I appreciate that. I appreciate the suggestion. There are, you know, other documents that we collect as well, just for the board's information. For example, typically with an LLC, as a belt and suspenders approach in addition to the certificate of good standing, which was also included in the package, we collect, you know, a manager's certification that he's, you know, there have been no changes in incumbency, and that under the operating agreement, which can often not be a matter of public record, he has the authority to sign the easement on behalf of the LLC, you know, in the event of a multiple manager situation. So appreciate your comments.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? And you can see on the Item Agenda Summary Sheet, the last page, you'll see the Department Recommendation. Water Division recommends acceptance of the easement. Further recommendation is to affirm importance of consistent application of the current policy with streamlined updates, current standards, moving future acceptances to the administrative agenda. So I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I vote to accept the water main easement for the condominium project at 213 North Falmouth Highway.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, on your consent agenda is a donation of $2,000 worth of water main pipe, and I want to thank Mr. Solomon on top for that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for including the explanation in the packet as well. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to discuss the 2023-2027 Strategic Plan Status Report. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very brief discussion, just for informational purposes only. As you recall, about two weeks ago, August 5th, we met for our Visioning Planning Workshop regarding the strategic plan. As you all know, back in October of last year, Select Board formally adopted the FY23-27 Plan. Contains seven elements, housing, which we've already talked about, energy and water conservation, sustainability, financial and economic stability, health and public safety, management of coastal natural resources and infrastructure, organizational effectiveness and community engagement, and water, wastewater and solid waste management. Madam Chair, Select Board members, as a result of the discussion concerning the interior and exterior conditions of the current police station, Select Board directed me to develop an action plan that's going to address the more immediate facility needs of that station, of the police station, as well as pursue the use of a portion of funds that had previously been allocated in 2022 to renovating the existing facility to now be used for an evaluation, feasibility, and space need study for the design, and ultimately, construction of a new police department facility. Based on the workshop discussion and guidance provided by Select Board, a revised and updated FY23-FY27 strategic plan is going to be brought back before Select Board in an upcoming meeting for review and adoption. We're still working on some of those changes. And lastly, the town manager's office will be requesting funds at the November town meeting for the purchase and implementation of a strategic planning project management software, which is going to provide enhanced tracking and reporting of progress being made at the department level and accomplishing the goals and objectives of the plan as the Select Board has put out in the five-year strategic plan. I think that's really going to put us in a better position to, number one, be more accountable to Select Board and the community in terms of getting these projects underway and completed, and also a little bit more transparency to the process, allowing the community to kind of see where we're at in terms of the number of goals and objectives that we're currently working on, those that have been completed, and those that we still have work to do.
Great. Any questions? We were all there, and we did prioritize the police department piece. And if you remember, Mr. Renshaw and Mr. Johnson Staub did a presentation on software, which was really interesting and great. Okay, and there's no action to be taken, so we will move on to. Vote to approve Select Board's support for the Resilient Woods Hole Walking Trail Project. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you. Resilient Woods Hole is seeking Select Board approval tonight to install a self-guided walking trail, which is going to include the installation of interpretive signposts on three town-owned sites. There's 12 sites total. Included in your packets this evening is an illustration of what these interpretive signs are going to look like. As I've just mentioned, there's going to be 12 total stops containing smartphone tablets and, well, smartphone and tablet accessible QR scan, scanning abilities. So basically, people will be able to scan these on their smartphones or tablets, and will give some really informative information in regards to some of the projects, sea level rise, coastal resiliency, some of the projects and things that are impacting the Woods Hole area. The project design and installation are fully funded by a Massachusetts Coastal Zone Management Resiliency Grant, and the aim of the project is to allow for more intense outreach and community engagement that will secure and ensure long-term community action and momentum. The walking trail story posts will have links, as I mentioned earlier, to the Resilient Woods Hole website for more information on current and future impacts, again, of sea level rise, regular nuisance flooding, and storm-related flooding. The walking trail will be based on the Gloucester Harbor Walk model involving a set map through Woods Hole with posts at various points as illustrated in the board's packet. If approved tonight, Resilient Woods Hole will be responsible for all costs associated with the design and implementation, and the town will assume no responsibility for any ongoing maintenance of the posts or other elements of the trail. We're told that the materials that are being used, or will be used for the construction of the signposts, are anticipated to maintain their appearance for about 15 to 20 years. So they're pretty durable, even in the elements. And lastly, in the event of damage to the signposts, or they are determined by the town to be in disrepair, Resilient Woods Hole would be requested to remove the damaged elements at their cost. And I wanted to also mention that one of the representatives of Resilient Woods Hole contacted my office today, and this is kind of an announcement PSA. The group, Resilient Woods Hole, on August 29th is having a community workshop, they've had smaller workshops, but this is going to be for the entire community, to come down and check out this project and learn more about it. Again, it's going to be August 29th at 5:00 PM at the Woods Hole Community Center. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but the request, and I am recommending the Select Board approve, support to allow the installation of these signposts along the self-guided walking trail, and that would be my requested motion.
And we have not received any negative feedback on this project, correct?
Correct.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Brown?
The only one I had was, I couldn't really tell what the materials are that they're actually going to be installing. Is it a cement or a wood post? There were so many different types of posts illustrated.
It is wood, it is designed to naturally age, and it has a life expectancy of 15 to 20 years, but exactly, I don't remember exactly what kind of wood product it is. I know it's not plastic, it is some sort of a wood.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
I do too. I think it's really cool. And it's, they're only asking for three town sites.
Of the 12 sites total, three of them are town property.
Good, entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I vote to approve, I make a motion to approve the Select Board's support of the Resilient Woods Hole Walking Trail Project.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And no opposed. Okay, we're going to move on to number four. Application for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license on the water LLC, Striperfest, Banshell Marina Park, Saturday 9/23/23, rain date of Sunday 9/24/23. And you have the application in your packets. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you all recall, the item was tabled from the August 7th Select Board meeting. There was some discussion regarding the use of tents. I was expecting the applicant to be here this evening. Have you received any?
I was expecting, no, I was just going to get up if you want the map on the screen.
We got an email from him late this afternoon that said that it really hasn't changed much in 12 years, and it shows the same plan. And so I would comment that it really has changed, because it's only been the last four years that the tent's been in the parking lot, and that's how long I've been getting complaints.
So we do, Madam Chair and Select Board Member Brown, we do have an illustration that the applicant submitted, we can pull that up, and I can't speak to kind of any revisions that have been made, but it has been an issue, I understand, for at least the past four years in regards to the tents.
I'm a little concerned that there isn't someone here to represent this application, especially with what just happened at the Banshell and the Marina in terms of noise and...
Madam Chair, would it be...
Oh, go ahead.
Would it be appropriate to table this till they, and give them notice to appear at the next meeting, so we could ask them some questions? I'm getting quite a bit of feedback from boat owners and users of the Marina, that it is very, very disruptive for the whole weekend, and I'd like to ask some specific questions before I voted on it.
It's supposed to be this weekend, right?
No, September 23rd.
Luckily, it's not till 9/23.
Oh, I was thinking 8/23. That would be Wednesday.
Yeah, good catch. What's the board's pleasure?
I agree, we should table it.
I wouldn't mind hearing from Mr. Johnson Staub if he has new information. No?
No, I did not communicate. Diane from our office was the one who conveyed the message.
Okay.
And, yeah, I had understood that they had been invited to attend.
And I did confirm with Diane in the office that the applicant was eager to come in and kind of talk about this plan specifically, because he's very aware that there's some questions about the tents in the parking lot area.
Maybe we should table it till after 7:00. Maybe he thinks that the meeting starts at 7:00, because historically, we had previously started at 7:00.
We'll table it, we'll see if anyone shows up, and we can certainly go back to it if that's what the board would like. Okay?
If we're still here.
If, if no one does show, then we will basically take a vote. We'll have to bring it up again.
Okay.
Okay, we will move on to, we'll hold number four, we'll move on to number five. Vote to adopt the FY25 Operating Budget Policy. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In accordance with Town Charter, Select Board is required to issue a policy statement relating to the budget for the next upcoming fiscal year. My office, in consultation with Assistant Town Manager Peter Johnson Staub and our Finance Director Ed Santeo, is submitting the FY25 Operating Budget Policy for consideration and adoption by Select Board. As I mentioned, Chapter C of the Home Rule Charter and Section C83, Submission of Budget and Budget Message. This policy document is required to be submitted on or before the first day of October. Mr. Johnson Staub and I have had the conversation, I think typically or traditionally, we try to get it out to the staff, this operating policy, a little bit earlier than the first day of October. It's kind of the milepost and guidelines for the staff as they prepare the upcoming operating budget. Section C83 also requires that on or before the first day of November of each year, Select Board shall issue a policy statement relating to the budget for the next fiscal year, and that this statement establishes the outer limits of possible budget growth for the town. And Madam Chair and Select Board members, as a result of these consultations that I've had with our Finance Director and Assistant Town Manager, I've prepared the attached FY25 Operating Budget Policy document for your review and consideration tonight. This budget policy attached for consideration recognizes and reinforces the existing financial policies of the town and further clarifies strategies for meeting the goals contained within those policy documents. The FY25 Operating Policy also recognizes the importance of future strategic planning workshops in identifying and prioritizing new initiatives and projects within the projected revenues constraints. And Madam Chair and Select Board, I'm recommending the Select Board adopt this FY25 Operating Budget Policy as presented, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have one question, and I apologize for not having the previous budget policy in front of me. Were there any changes made?
The, I don't think there were significant changes from last year. Peter, can you?
So, right, there, I wouldn't describe any, there are some updates. We have sort of simplified the language to reflect the current practice, as the town manager indicated, reinforcing that the board has strategic planning workshops which inform the budget priorities. And, yeah, I'm trying to, I was actually just about to pull up the old document as you were, as you were talking, to see if there were any other changes that jumped out. Oh, I know what I was, the board did clarify in the fiscal policy how you are treating the short-term rental, actually, all of the rooms excise tax going forward. So this operating budget policy reflects that update.
Okay, perfect. Any questions from the board about this policy?
Just the one that Mr. Johnson Staub just mentioned, the 1/6 of the total revenue. How does that fit in with our $4 million funding plan for the Affordable Housing Fund? Is it maintaining the level that we were previously at, or?
So I don't recall any discussion around maintaining a $4 million affordable housing plan, unless it was retaining a balance in the fund, is that?
Right.
So that was something that was talked about, I don't know that it was adopted formally, but we're certainly, we're in good standing with that balance at this time. We have over 7 at this time, and it's, there are projects in the pipeline, so it could quickly go, you know, below certainly 7, and perhaps go to 4 or even below. We do have replenishing appropriations coming up, both in November, yeah, in November, we have some additional appropriations coming as well. So, you know, we can certainly keep you posted on that balance, but at this point, we're in pretty good shape.
I did think we put that in writing somewhere, that that was a goal of our...
In the fiscal policy? I can look, I can look that up. It's not in the operating budget policy. I'll look up the fiscal policy.
Okay, thank you.
All right, entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to vote to adopt the fiscal year 2025 Operating Budget Policy.
A second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, we're going to move on to vote, I have a feeling that's what he's here for, but I'm going to do this last one, and I'll go back. Vote to reverse the all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license from Peppercorn Restaurant LLC to Olive Restaurants, Inc., doing business as Chivrix Cafe and Bar at 285 Main Street. And this is a little bit confusing, but Mr. Renshaw?
I'll try to walk us through the process, how we got to where we're at tonight. Back on July 18th of this year, Select Board approved an all-alcoholic beverages license transfer from the owners of Chivrix Cafe and Bar to the potential new ownership group, Peppercorn Restaurant LLC. On July 28th, the town manager's office received a letter from the attorney representing Peppercorn LLC indicating that the buyer had been hospitalized and that a power of attorney agent would return the all-alcoholic beverages license to the sale, because the sale was not going to materialize, come to fruition. On August 10th, the town manager's office received another letter from the law firm, and a copy of this letter is attached in your packet, representing Chivrix Cafe and Bar requesting that the all-alcoholic beverages license transaction be reversed from Peppercorn LLC to Olive Restaurants Incorporated, again, which is doing business as Chivrix Cafe and Bar. Madam Chair and Select Board members, the effect of the reversal of the license, the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission requires that the Select Board vote to approve the attached licensing authority certification form, and I should say, to affect this required reversal. The ABCC is requiring that the Select Board vote to approve the attached licensing authority certification form. So based upon the fact that the sale of the establishment did not materialize, the town, I am recommending that the Select Board approve the reversal of the all-alcoholic beverages license and approve the attached license authority certification.
Can I ask one question? Why would we approve a new license prior to the deal going through to sell the restaurant?
That was the question I had.
It seems like it's backwards.
It might not have been represented that way. You'd have to look at the minutes to, I mean, we may be, we may have been assuming that it had already taken place, and because it, and I'm not, I'm just assuming that's the only reason, because I don't remember, that's one of the things I would have asked, and I don't remember...
I could offer a suggestion.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
I would say that it's probably, a sale might be contingent on the license being granted, just like sometimes when you want to buy a piece of land, you do a permitting on the property to make sure the house that you want to put on it can be permitted, and that's a contingency in the purchase and sale agreement, so it's probably a similar type thing with business purchase.
That makes sense, because you don't want to buy a business if you can't get an alcohol license.
Right. I can certainly check, that does seem reasonable.
No, it does. I was just curious, so thank you for that.
But the license, we approved, I'm sorry, we approved the license from Chivrix to Peppercorn, and they're asking us to reverse from Peppercorn to Chivrix?
Back to Chivrix.
But we're not really, is it really reversing, or is it just accepting that it's going that way? I mean, I question the word reverse.
Nullifying, nullifying.
Yeah, I just question the word reverse in that, in that setting. It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't seem like we're really reversing it. We're accepting that it's going from Peppercorn back to Olive. Am I correct?
So, yes, you are.
It's like an annulment.
And Madam Chair and Select Board Member Mascali, so the way Town Council was involved early on in this discussion, and kind of the process, working, the front office and I threw it, reverse... and I through it, reversal is a term that was used in some email exchanges, and I think I picked up on that, quite honestly. There may be another more accurate term, but it's basically, the way to undo the action that the board took on July 18th is to basically recognize that the sale did not materialize and undo that action. Reversal may not be, quite honestly, the correct technique.
That was all my, was trouble with the word reversal. I think we all know what we're, what we're asked to do, and I think we're all in favor of it, so.
Sure. Good point.
And the concern right now, well, we don't, we want this to be seamless now that that sale is not going to materialize so that the Chivrix Bar and Cafe can, can move forward with purchasing alcohol.
And continue, yeah.
As they need to.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the reversal of the all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license from Peppercorn Restaurant, LLC to Olive Restaurants, Inc., doing business as Chivrix Cafe and Bar as presented.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, let's skip back to number four. Application for special one-day wine and malt liquor license on the water, LLC, Striperfest, Banshell Marina Park, Saturday 9/23/23 with a rain date of Sunday 9/24. And Mr. Renshaw, you did introduce this. I believe we have someone here. If you could come up and introduce yourself?
Hey, Paul, Josh, we're in Open 55, California softball game. We came up with a thing, and I thought it timed it perfectly.
Did you win?
I'd be going, is this game still going?
Is the game still going on?
We were moving fast, too, so.
I thought I had it at 7:05. And I think I'm gonna ask for a couple more, Peter, as far as, I think there's a couple more issues.
Okay. So, we had our introduction, and we have our agenda item summary sheet, and it felt like the board had questions of the applicant, and if you would introduce yourself, please?
Sure. I'm Chris Meagan. I'm the owner and publisher of On the Water, have been, or started it with Bill Hoff probably back in 1996, and have owned it for the last 17 years. Raised my family here, been part of On the Water since we started with it. And so, this is our 12th or 13th year that we've been doing the Striperfest here at Marina Park. I thought it's gone pretty seamlessly. I know, Peter, you sat in the working group meter, I believe, back in February, where I think we covered most of these issues then, but happy to cover them again as far as the parking, because I understand there was a concern regarding parking with where the tenting goes and such. So, what you're looking at, if I'm assuming that was the question at hand that Diane outlined to me, if you're looking at this, the Banshell is going to be, well, obviously it's right there. And so, what we do is, we set up all the fields on Thursday, the fields get set up on Thursday, parking is still open to everybody in the, in the main lot there on Thursday. On Friday, what we do is where the Yamaha trailer goes and where the tent goes, we block that off so we can set that, on Friday, we can set up the tent in the parking area there, and we can set up the Yamaha trailer, the coaster and the OTW trailer, and those get set up on Friday, on Saturday morning, Friday late after everyone's gone. Being part of the fishing community, that's my business, fishing and boating, and we're a media company and that, we're very cognizant about keeping it open for the charter votes. I mean, that's our livelihood. So, as far as any parking on Friday for anyone that needs to park for any of the charter boats, we leave plenty of space on that side. And then on Saturday morning, by the time we start, most of the charter boats are done. They're usually, if they have it, it's a slower time in the season for the charter boats then, that's why we do a shoulder season, usually the last Saturday in September. When I sat as the chairman for the, the Falmouth, I'm gonna senior moment here, the business community here, one of the things we always looked at doing was having events on the shoulder seasons. We didn't need anything else wedged between Memorial Day and Labor Day, and that's why it was always at the end of September, where I think the parking, the parking issues that come up are gonna be substantially far less, based on when the charters are going out and when they're coming in. I know there was a concern with, I want to say it's the E-Dock, and don't quote me on that, it's the dock that has the largest boats there. There was a concern probably back in, I want to say it was back in 2022, I think, 2022, we addressed that there was an issue that somebody had with getting to their boats. Since then, what we did is, last year, Greg Fraser, who's the head of the Marines Waterway, he ended up being our detail. So, one of the things we said to Greg on our detail is, Greg, you know the concern, you know, please walk down there and make sure that all the parking's available. Throughout the day, we checked with Greg, there was never an issue with parking, so I was a little bit of a loss as to how this, how somebody would have claimed that there might be an issue, but that's what I'm here to address now. Whoever may have had that claim, I'd love to speak to them. Last time it came up, I want to say there was five or six, I reached out to all of them, and they said, our biggest issue is just being able to get to our boats. And so, what we did is, we happened to have that day, we had flown a drone overhead, we had aerial shots of the entire thing. I don't know if Diane made those available to all of you, but I know that she sent them to me last week saying, Chris, the drone shots are still here. And so, if you look on this map, what they call, where all the parking spaces, and I'll kind of, if you can see it here, all of these parking spaces are for all of the boats that are, that are part of the town docks, all of these spots. The last time there was a concern, we had aerial shots, there was exactly seven, I think it was seven or eight vehicles in there, I think they accommodate 28, so there was a good 15 or 16 empty spots for where they would be parking on it. And so, like I said, this is our 12th year doing it, maybe 13th year doing it, and it's always been a matter of, the other thing we try to do, we'll keep this open on Friday, we only close this off on Saturday morning when we have to start entering folks into it. So, this, you can drive through here on Friday right through, and usually by the most part, I think all the vehicles have to be out of there because there's no overnight parking in that area, all the vehicles have to be out. Last thing we do is probably around 11 o'clock at night, 12 o'clock, we close that off for the next morning, and that's the extent of it.
Questions? Mr. Brown?
So, the concerns I'm hearing are not from people living in the charter boat area. It's in further down, by the way, the Flying Bridge is, and the concern is not that they can't get to their own boat, it's their guests can't find a place to park.
Well, you're talking about this area down here? I have no control over that area down there.
But my point is that the whole lot, all the parking is really needed. That parking lot fills up every weekend, whether there's an event or not, so the--
Well, we boss, we, all of us, so what we do is, we have parking on the grass in here, which we coordinate with Greg Fraser, and then as far as this area in here, we don't, we don't have anyone detailing that to tell who's, who's with the guests and who's not with the guests.
Right.
But I guess my point would be, if there's 18 parking spots in here, wouldn't they park down here?
You gotta have a sticker. You gotta be an owner to park down there.
And that's first come, first served, too, down there.
That's always been that way. I mean, go there tomorrow, and it's gonna, you're gonna have a hard time parking.
But their guests park up, up top, is what their complaint is. I'm sorry, Doug, I didn't--
Yeah, no, that's fine. That is the complaint.
And you said you haven't had any complaints since 2022. I got one 22 minutes before I got here, that, that parking lot is filled up for the whole weekend with setup and breakdown and everything.
It's not.
They lose the whole weekend, and we're talking about the slip holders, not the charter boats.
That's not remotely close.
Okay. I'll talk to Greg Fraser then.
Greg Fraser's the head of that, and that's the very reason we reached out to him as a detail that way. And I'm concerned that somebody would reach out to you 22 minutes before this. When I reached out to Diane on the Thursday prior to that selectmen's meeting, she said, it's a consent agenda, Chris, there's been no issues brought up whatsoever. And then over the weekend, or sometime between Thursday and Monday, somebody calls. So, back on the 20, back on the 22nd, I checked on Friday afternoon at 5:00, there was no concerns. On Saturday at 5:00, an email came into the selectmen. I didn't see any of that concern whatsoever, and then we had the meeting on Monday. And I guess my question would be, is, is there like a format of which these, these issues come into the selectmen?
I said it was just up till 22. This isn't the first I've heard about it. This, for the last couple of years, or the year and a half that I've been on, I've heard the same complaints.
Because we had a working group meeting on February 14th, and across the board with every one of the working group, which I swear I thought this was addressed, I didn't think that this had any issue to do with the actual permit for the one-day license. I thought that, based on the email I got for special events back on February 17, 2022, all of this changed, that everything went to the working group, the working group made the decision to, I think, the Town Manager, at which time the Town Manager approves it. So, when Diane reached out to me, I thought it was just a consent agenda for the liquor license. I didn't think there was any issue whatsoever with the tent, because we started, we had it last year, I want to say on the 23rd or 24th. It's well documented, our meeting is gonna be held for the working group, in which case everybody in the community that has any interest in that can come to that meeting, which they do. So, you go through fire, you go through police, you go through, you know, buildings and grounds, you go through all of those, and if you remember, Peter, it was dubbed as one of the best-run events that this community has had in a long time. And literally, it was, you can probably go back and see the tape on it, I was standing here for all of two minutes, and it was pushed through. So, this is new to me that I'm hearing anything.
Mr. Brown?
So, what happens is, the people that are on those boats are not coming to these meetings, and they're not paying attention to it, but they call up on Saturday and Friday and Sunday and say, you let this happen again. Every year, for the last four years, I've been getting these calls during the weekend, you gotta come down here and look at this. And I go down, and there's no place to park, and you drive around, and you look, and you see that the place is jam-packed, and obviously, it's busy. But what I'm saying is, you might be patrolling this half of it, but it's impacting the whole parking lot because of the lack of parking. And the concern I have, and I've raised this for the last three, four years, is that you're taking away a ton of parking by setting up tents and taking over this whole parking area. So, no matter how well you manage it, and I'm sure it's well managed, it's still, it's detracting from the amount of parking, and plus, it's a busy event.
So, we run two buses from the Lawrence School, right? So, we run two buses from the Lawrence School, we have parking at, we work with Charlie Bardellis from the Island Queen, he lends us his parking spot, we use all of that. Last year, we wrote a check for $15,000 to Wings, the year before for $12,000, the year before that for $10,000. That's the proceeds for anything that we bring in at the door, the gate, or any of those things goes to the Wings. And so, my niece ran the road race yesterday. I couldn't park within two miles of the road race. We had to park what would be the Walmart on the far side of the Walmart parking lot and walk from there to it. That's a one-day inconvenience in the middle of the summer, and I get it, don't get me wrong, I get it. But I think we take every precaution to try to keep that as clear as possible with the, the two buses that run from the Lawrence, from Lawrence, the parking that we put in the field for the, and the VIP folks that come in that way, we try to put them in the field. And then we have, like I said, we work with Charlie Bardellis from the Island Queen, and he generously lets us use his lot as well. And so, for the most part, Scott was here with the, with the Town Rec Department, I'm not sure who manages that, if it's Greg Fraser or Scott that would manage that lot, or maybe neither of them. But I never heard anything from Greg, I never heard anything from Scott, and to say that for three years, you've heard that, we were sitting at the working group back in February, not one word was mentioned about that.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, and I apologize for not being there to bring it up, but I've just recently put myself on the list for notifications from that group, so you're right, I should have been there to complain.
Did you want to say something?
Thank you, yes. So, just, you know, briefly to touch on the working group and the prior complaints. So, there, we did receive a number of complaints, it was not last year, it was, you know, two or three years before, and that was, that was when you produced--
I have a letter here, that was, that was a, I think it was Stephanie Andrade on behalf of probably six or seven folks. I personally reached out to them.
Yeah, I was just looking for the date. You have the date of that?
I do. It was, it was Saturday, February 22nd. So, on Friday, the 21st, I checked with Diane's office, there was no notice.
Of 22?
Of 2022, excuse me, 2020. It was February 22nd of 2020.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That was the last notice I've ever heard of a parking issue.
Right. So, so from my perspective, presiding, you know, this past year over the special events working group, there was a traffic, there was a parking concern that was raised back in 2020, and that was shared, and there was a dialogue, and, and I had thought that the conclusion of that was that they were properly managing the parking because there was parking available for the, for the slip holders. I'm now understanding, this year, for the first time, the concern that it's the, the fact that the parking lot is closed down, and therefore, the customers of the charter boats, that is the real concern. So, that issue was not raised in the working group, and, you know, from my perspective, since 2020, I hadn't really been hearing that this was an ongoing concern, so that's why it wasn't raised at the working group as an ongoing concern.
Peter, I don't think that's what he's stating, though.
No, it's not.
It's not what he's stating.
It's not the charter boat.
He's talking about down by the Flying Bridge.
The private owners on the other section of the--
The slip.
The Flying Bridge.
They're just saying that the whole place--
Oh, I see.
Is packed.
The slip.
Right, but--
It's unfair use of public property.
So, it's the saturation of parking in the area generally--
It's down by the Flying Bridge, I understand.
--that one of the parking areas is dedicated to the event and closed off for parking is--
It's impacting the parking on the whole site.
And so, I guess one factual question I had, because I think you were mentioned to me before the meeting, that maybe it was just for the past several years, that the, that this parking area was closed to parking, and--
It's always, for 12 years running, that, that is, on Friday, that's always been, we put it, for 12 years running, there's been a tent in that area. We allow access on Friday through there, we allow all the parking for the charter boats on Friday, and then, like I said, that's my livelihood. For the most part, every one of those charter guys, I know them, we work with all of those guys and saying, what do you have coming in? Who's coming in? So, it's not the charter guys on that side, because on, on this side, if anyone needs to park in here on Saturdays, they can park in here for the, for the charter thing. I think what, what Mr. Brown's talking about is the other end down by the, by the Flying Bridge. And I guess my, my question would be, I guess we'd have to work with Greg Fraser's office to figure out like how to manage that, because it's, it's hard to say like at 1:00 in the afternoon, are you going to the Flying Bridge? Are you parking for a boat, or are you parking for the event? And, because we control, we control the grass right in here, we corner off this entire grass area there, and we, and we can control that. If, if there's a suggestion by the Select Board as far as us getting involved with trying to manage parking over there, I just worry that it's hard to decipher between who's going down to the boats, who is going to be going to the Flying Bridge, or who's coming to our event.
Of course, it's gonna be impossible. That's why I'm just saying, why do you have to take up the whole area of this parking lot to do what you're doing down there?
Because--
Why does all this parking have to be taken out of play?
I guess I would, I would say because we have 3,000 or 4,000 folks that come through during the course of the day. And so, as far as, as far as the area that way, it's, it's, you know, that's the area we have to use as far as the amount of folks that we have in there to manage them safely.
Mr. Me, would it be fair to say that this event grows in numbers each year?
It doesn't. And the only reason I say that is, we kind of limit, one of the things that we said to Peter when we were at the event is that we limit the amount of, of folks that sign up for the tournament. So, our high-water mark was 2021, we had 5,800 folks that, that signed up for it. You roughly get about a third of those folks that come to the event, and the rest are gonna be local town folks or friends of the folks that signed up to come to the event.
So, you have to sign up, every, every patron has to sign up?
Yeah, you have to sign up. So, we can really manage it pretty tightly.
So, there was no walking off the street to be able--
You can get a walk-in off the street, but you're looking at 100, 125 of them, that's the extent of it. Everyone is pretty much, for the most part, calculated as far as the numbers coming in.
How many parking spaces are we talking about?
None.
Well, but how many? No, but how many are, are being taken out of, out of availability?
How many, how many slips are down on this side of the, out of the, and how many slips are affected on that side of the harbor?
Are we losing 20 parking space, 30? I, that's, I'm just asking how many parking spaces are-
I'd say 40.
You're, you're probably losing about 20 to 24 parking spaces, maybe a little bit more on Saturday.
Yeah, and just on Saturday.
Yeah, cuz what we'll do is on Friday, we let, where it says the coaster, all of this is still open for parking because they have to be out there. They can't stay overnight. The only thing that's up on Friday is the tent here and the Yamaha trailer. Folks still park here. We don't touch the handicap spots that are there. They still park in between there. And so really we're talking about Saturday is, is that-
Does, does that number include where the Yamaha trailer would be or that's other parking spaces?
Uh, there's, there's parking from the Yamaha trailer down to the end of the tent by the, by the, where it says tent three.
Right.
That side, and then some parking opposite that side as well. Two of these are gates. This is a gate right here. I don't know if you can see this, but this is a gate and this is a gate to driving into the field. So the parking's limited between those two gates.
So the parking that's closest to the ban shell is still available, is that?
Uh, the parking that's closest to the ban shell. It's, it's really from, when you take the left of the ban shell, we're kind of blocked off there. Because the bus, we, we, we have two buses that run, sorry, Mr. Linsky, we have two buses that run from Lawrence School. And so you can see where the buses come in. They come in, they make the turn right by the harbor master's office. They drop the folks off there and they go back out.
As Mr. Brown mentioned, I mean, there's over 110,000 square feet of tent over there during that weekend. If you look at the square footage on these tents, just the tents alone are over 100,000 square feet.
Did you have a comment? Mr. Scott Price?
110,000?
10, no, 10,000.
Yeah, 10,000.
Four, yeah, I'm sorry, 10,000.
Yeah.
Question, so looking where it says no event parking here, that's supposed to be for the charter boats. Is that where you said in the past there had-
So what we do is we open that up for the, we open that up for the charter boats on Saturday morning and on all day Friday.
Okay, so for me to finish my question, so where it says no event parking there, is it possible that, and maybe this is a question for the town manager's office, possible that there's a one day exception, that people don't need to have a sticker there, that that could be an option for people to park there? They're not for events, but if they're coming?
I don't know. Those people pay a lot of money for those slips. Yeah, very expensive.
They're all town slips. So I would imagine, yes, they're all town slips. They're owned by the town and rented to the, to the folks. But as I said, if, if you were to drive down there along that line, more than 50% of those spots are open.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Mr. Enshaw?
Just thank you, Madam Chair. Is it possible for you to reconfigure the larger, it says tent three, 30 by 100? Is, is there any opportunity to reconfigure, position that 90 degrees?
I would, I would say that we could probably do it for 2024, but I gotta be honest with you, it was, it came out of nowhere when Diane said you're on the consent agenda. There's been, I, I checked with her on Thursday at 4:00 in the afternoon and there was no issues. And having gone through the working group, the, the hard thing now is like all of our contractors, all of our partners and sponsors are all kind of set in the location based on the area of square footage we have and them coming. But 2024, I'm sure we can manipulate that.
You mind me, who's housed under that? Who occupies that space under that particular tent?
So we have, we have probably like 10 or 12 different partners that are, are from, anywhere from Yamaha has 12 boats in the water, all the way through to Simrad Electronics, Columbia Clothing, Yeti Coolers. And so, you know, underneath there could be, we're in one corner like that. And then I wanna say it is Penn Rods and Reels, it's probably Yeti Coolers. And I think Columbia takes the end. And, and, you know, but like I said, if, if I had a little bit of time on that, I could probably manipulate it with, with the tents and such and, and see if we couldn't maybe move back tent one to the back corner of that lot. But I would, I would, I would ask, you know, Mr. Brown, any of the select folks that are around on Saturday, the 23rd, to come down?
I do, I come every year cuz I get calls. And it's always packed.
Yeah.
There's no place to park. I've never seen a parking spot. I've driven around it every year.
Where do all the vendors park?
Wait a minute, Mr. Scallan, go ahead.
I'm just gonna make a, I'm gonna be at the Bachi tournament on the 23rd of September. That's all I just wanted.
Go ahead, Mr. Scallan.
Where do all the, the vendors that you described from Yamaha and-
Yeah, what we try to do with the vendors is we, we try to get as many of them going to Lawrence School as possible. So what they'll do is come in in the morning, by the most part, Friday afternoon, a lot of the vendors, everyone on the field can set up on Friday, right? So anyone that's on the field, that doesn't take away any parking. We can set up as many of those folks for the vendors as we can. The only vendors we really have to set up on late Friday or Saturday morning underneath that one tent in, in the parking lot that way. And so as far as vendors, what we'll try to do is move as many of them from Lawrence to there. And then anyone that has a trailer that comes in on Friday morning, there's a big field that's adjacent to where Mr. Brown's talking about, all that parking by the Flying Bridge is a big field in there. We corner that whole thing off and we put the folks in there. So it's on the turret.
Have we had any complaint from the Flying Bridge itself as to the parking situation and their concerns about it?
So I, I have not. And Peter's saying he's not receiving any direct complaints from Flying Bridge.
Well, they have their own parking lot.
Right. Where would these other people that are complaining, what, where would they be going?
They just hope to find a, a parking spot anywhere in the public lot.
But there is that area that's, that's grassed.
Well, that's, no, that gets used by the event, right?
I mean, if, if, if we knew that X amount of folks were coming in and they wanted to park in there and we could designate like, hey, these folks are coming in and we wanna park them in, then we can do that. We'd have to figure out a way of saying like, who's going on the boat on the 23rd? Here's a parking green slip showing this, we can get you on the grass that way. I, I don't think that would be a problem. It's a matter of trying to communicate with all the boat owners there as to who possibly is coming in based on weather on Saturday. That, that's the issue you're gonna have there, is, is it?
Any other questions or comments from the board?
At the risk of sounding argumentative, it isn't up to, it shouldn't be up to people that pay for their slips to go out of their way to get, to get parking.
I, I don't think it's the people that pay for their slips cuz they have parking. I think it's the guests of the people that-
Well, I mean, that, that goes, that goes with the territory. When you buy a boat and you pay big money for a slip, you like to invite guests out and that's the big rub on this. That's all. And I know that it's not a lot probably we can do about it because we're talking about a liquor license, but we'd, I personally would hope that you'd be a little more compassionate about, you know, their inconvenience too in the future.
I, we've, we've had two buses for 12 years. And, and, and the only reason is that if I'm not sound compassionate is that I, I thought we had gone through this with the working group. And, and to Mr. Brown's point, I've never heard that comment before. The only thing I've ever heard was on February 22nd and at 20, on 2020, a, a letter from these folks. But at least I, I could, I could look at it and say, okay, I can adjust these folks. I know probably 90% of them and I can have a conversation with them. And I guess what's hard about it is to the point of the road race, middle of the summer, how many folks there, I parked two miles away to walk. You wanna talk about inconvenience in parking?
Okay, well, we're, we're not gonna discuss the road race. Mr. Brown, you had an issue?
No, I was, no, no more issues. I was just gonna say that I agree that it's late to be bringing this significant concern and request for such a change is probably not practical. So I will concede that I should've been at the February meeting to make this more clear, but I just, I appreciate you coming here to at least hear it so you'll know better what we're, what we're hearing about.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I just ask for, you know, for future direction for the working group? And it, you know, it could be tonight or it could be down the road. If the board does not wish to have that parking area blocked off for this event in the future, you know, that may be something that we can address with the applicant next winter.
In February.
But I, but I don't wanna wait until, you know, the application is submitted. I'd like to, you know, know sometime, you know, in the, in the next few months, if that's the direction that the board would like for us to pursue.
Okay, with all the comments, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for a special one day wine and malt liquor license on the water LLC, Striper Fest Ban Shell Marina Park, September 23rd, 2023.
Take it. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I'll vote for it too.
Thank you. I very much appreciate it.
Sorry about the-
I do understand your concerns, I really do. I guess the only thing I would ask is if you get these during the course of the year, I would love to adjust them then. Because if it's somebody that, if Mr. Brown, if you get some of Mr. Zlansky and you say, hey, Chris, here's the, here's the concern, let's address them. Because like in this case, I could reach out to the five or six people and say, what are the concerns? What do I need to do? And, and we could solve them.
Great, thank you.
I know we've already closed it, but-
Sorry.
Could you just, could I ask, could we share just a little bit of what the feedback was and the interaction with those folks?
Sure, yeah, I'd love to.
Is that, you okay? Just curious what the resolved, what, what did you feel got resolved with those?
Back in 2020?
Yes, please.
Sure. So what I did is, is knowing most of the folks on this list, I just, I went over across the street, three of them were the Augustus, and they said, we just wanna make sure we have access to our boat. I think they're on EDOC. And, and, and so what I did is I said, we'll make sure that our detail, make sure that nothing is open there. I showed Roger, Scott and Jolene an aerial shot from that day that we had. Luckily, we had drone fly, reached out to the Hamilton. I don't know, there was probably like five or six of them on there and reached out to as many of them I could. I knew the Alsons, Bruce Crenshaw, I don't think I caught up with him. I'm not sure if he's a charter boat captain anymore. But I just, I, I literally went across the street, I built my, my building on the back of Falmouth Lumber. That was all their lumber. So I, you know, and so I just addressed them and said like, we'll make sure that if that's your concern, I'll make sure we have a detail that monitors that on a regular basis throughout the course of the day so that you have access down. If you drive down that way to put your boat in the water, there's a road that goes down and you spin around and you can put it in, or you continue on and take the right to where your boats are. We just said, we're gonna make sure that that's open all the time. And the detail stands at the top and then their job is to walk back and forth to make sure that nobody's parking down that way.
Okay, well, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. I will read the consent agenda items. If anyone would like to hold them, please notify me as the chair. Licenses, application for a common victor license, the Portuguese, 424 East Falmouth Highway, Unit B 101 East Falmouth. Okay, administrative orders, request from the recreation department to spend $2,000 from the Falmouth Road Race donation for the community center playground for the sound study for the Trotting Park Pickleball Complex.
I just have a question, not necessarily hold, but is that the entire cost for the sound study, $2,000? Or that's a contribution to? It seems a small amount for an adequate sound study.
It's my understanding, Madam Chair and Select Board Member Muscalis, my understanding that is the cost of the sound study. And I think this company's been used in the past, is that, is that?
They have, yeah. The only, the only question in my mind, it is, it's the entire cost of the work that would be done before construction. We may want to do an after construction follow-up study, but my understanding is this is the only piece that we would be doing before construction.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Accept donation of excess water pipe valued at approximately $2,000 from Michael Salamondo to the Water Department. And number three, approve withdrawal from the beach donations account in the amount of $500 for the Dr. David Garber Dare to Be Great Award to be given to a lifeguard during the annual banquet. Didn't they already have the annual banquet?
They did. He's patiently waiting for that award.
Okay. To be given during the banquet. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Some move?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to the minutes of March 27th, 2023.